Majority floor.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Mr. Tryno. Dagat pagitang kulang diaba sa ato ang kuwan? Sa ato ang kining mga tools and equipment?
So far.
So far sa Karo medyo komplito-komplito na gitsa no kung ah makuha tan eh. And ah every year kung because ah atong inabuhat Karo is gina-train ato ang ato ang 22 LGUs. So kani siyang mga equipment ginagamit ni nato siya. So most likely pag magamit na to siya ah puhon-puhon ah magdeteriorate man sa dangyahang ang yahang yahang kuwan o ang yahang life shield. Sumana siya nga nae-uban nga mga equipment like for example kani mga rope nga ah every other years. Na si may expiration year no? So hinanahang mahitabo but most likely honorable ah obay-obay na gina ng ato mga equipment and we are following also di katong gihatag nga memorandum circular gihatag sa tuwa sa ah Indira RMC kung saang ma-equipment ato ang kakuaon.
So far ah for this year sa kinila nga mga tools, we have more or less ni ba 20 million? Ba?
Yes, sir.
Kay kining sa ato ang rescue tripod, kermantol rope, na nisas mga 2.4 million. Kining ato ang pong extrication rescue tools, this battery operated amounted to 5.8 million. Kinipod sa ato ang self-contained breathing apparatus, red craft and gas detector analyzer na apo nisas mga 4.5 million. Ang ato ang pod kining ascender o descender na self-contained underwater breathing apparatus muni siya ang 9.5. Pagotan na lang kani kining atong ascender o descender tulun i kabok diba?
Yes, sir.
Tulog kabok. Kining ato ang self-contained breathing apparatus na red craft and gas detector analyzer pila ni siya kabok?
10.
Pulok kabok ah okay. So kining ato ang kuwan um extrication rescue tools battery operated?
One set including the pneumatic ah pneumatic nga kuwan ato siya lifting bags.
Tung 4. Nam nisay lifting bag diba?
Yes.
Nam nisay katong murao kining?
Complete set. Yes, ram.
Ram no? Muni gitaw ram?
Yes.
Ah okay. Complete set ni?
Yes.
Kining atong tripod, kermantol rope pila ni kabok?
We have three sets also sa ato ang tripod.
Pero 7 feet lang ni dilin siya 10 feet.
Ah laila siya sukod honorable sa kaning ato ang tripod.
Ang isa ka set ano eh pila kabok ni?
Ah obay-obay na siya sir.
Oh dagan dino.
Dagan kay kay kuwan na siya ah more than 30 na siya kabok ang isa ka set.
Kini kining atong mga apparatus tanan masulud tanan siya si isa ka kuwan isa da ka kining ato ang truck nga ang si tawag ni?
Yes, katong truck na to actually may ikusadito. Yes.
Lagi kina maginasi is kining certain area kindi dun mo siya i-arrange diba ifine?
Yes, sir. Actually ah gilahin na na to Karo ng ato ang water and land.
Or basin ugnagita ikinhanglan na pod aning isa gitsa sa kenan intended relief for this ah kining ato ang mga equipo.
Yes, ah ang among plano is ang kuwan na pod sunod ang sa water na gitsa because kana ato mga equipment Karo is intended for land na search rescue on retrieval and na atay ato ang kuwan pero wala pa gittay pang water gitsa nga 4 by 4 gitsa nga musugok gitsa habog-habog. Just in case.
Yeah, ah so wala pa so far kini sa ato kini lang sa ato ang gi-prepare but hopefully on the next ah year basin maka do we need relief to purchase another vehicle intended for this mga equipment?
Yes, possibly.
Then what about katong ato ang experience dito sa overview? Number 2 gay kay atong retrieval sa body tungo kina no ang ato ang detector muradili kay si accurate compared ato ang 2 ang to kabok dito iro good kina eh okit katong kiit katong ibutan bito rito ni subida ni mo ng ibutan sa kids.
Yes, yes.
Magkiit. Actually. Pero kina eh kina eh na naka kuwan diba? Sa opo na to gikan.
Yes, opo.
Pero muni 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 ako ang.
Mangiit lang.
Kay ano ah we are also looking forward to have this kana bang murag mas madali na to nga pag rescue I mean in terms lugar sa retrieval ha? Okay especially during last night because in our location Magon usually based atong experience murao kita ginitestingan ano eh katong baguhatong equipo katong na last night dito sa barangay kitatao sa Rawarif nakita magkaapodto sa province ang naghatag dito katong bako pero ang isa ato katong pafamiling na apo na peto na apil ato ang isa kay dito na sa part sa North Cutobato na kuwan isanagang na agis sa dito sa Rawarif then pulang ni River di dito na din sa sa North Cutobato or kabakan magandep kayaya Carmen. So muni akong pagotan na kung we have also looking forward kung pinitama ka kuwan atong ato ang snipin dog?
Yes, ah Sir Johan of course no ah by next year ah na nakapna sa ato ang plano nga makuha o ah mga dogs no? To be trained and of course atong personnel pod nga matrain na na.
Ang mahal taba ano eh personal nga motrain?
Yes.
Diba? Kay namaginahan na naki-body ano eh? Pati ang pati ang handler. Naanad siya sa kuwan niya lahi ang imong ipa ipadala.
Pati ang handler i-train.
Ang handler ano eh ibu i-train ano eh ibu.
Anduha niya.
Kina eh.
Magdulukina sila.
Tama. Dulo. Kina eh pero katong mga kiit-kiit lang piniratong dito na sa overview si Kuroga. Nama actually na iibutang dito busy sir. Ang doghouse ba?
Ah.
Kamulo silang himo dito dito na iro dito abin akumote iki nakasimot dilim adai.
Kiit lang to.
I think that would be all to my this representation, Mr. Chair. Some board members.
Thank you. Majority floor um from the other members of the board napay laing questions. Um if there are none siguro sir um ah we appreciate and we commend you sa inyong kuwan Sir Johan sa inyong office sa kanunay nga pagatiman sa pagpreparas atong probinsya sa mga kalamidad. Kesa matat pasagi paingon nga if you fail to prepare then you're fail preparing to fail diba? So manganda lang itao nakabalos mga panahon ba mababot. Um thank you, sir. Thank you, Sir Johan.
Thank you.
Majority floor.
Yes, recess for one minute, Mr. Chair.
This is one minute.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move for the restoration out the the restoration of the law, Mr. Chair.
In second, house house is third.
We will now proceed, Mr. Chair, to the second reading and business for the day because we have no item tabled in the current in the unfinished business, Mr. Chair. For item one and two, where this representation, Mr. Chairman, three and five?
Three and four okay na. Doha? Pili okay na?
Akuha.
Oh doha rabok.
Three, four, and five?
Sorry, sorry, three day.
Yeah, three, four, and five. By also this representation, six, seven, eight, and nine by Honorable Board Member Monsanto and item number 10 to 15 by Honorable Board Member Monsanto. For item number one and two, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Majority floor.
Mr. Chairman, this is a committee report on the Committee on Rules and Privileges to which was referred. A letter of endorsement dated November 4, 2025 from Engineer Giselle B. Magobat, the Provincial Planning Development Coordinator of the Civil Society Organization, this the pertinent documents submitted by the Bukidnon Agrarian Reform Agribusiness Multi-Purpose Association Incorporated with an organization address located Porokten, Duloon, Maramak, Bukidnon signifying the intent to apply for civil society organization accreditation. Have considered the same if I submit the letter. The findings and comments and recommendations of the committee, Mr. Chair, the Bukidnon Agrarian Reform Agribusiness Multi-Purpose Association Incorporated. This is located in Porokten, Duloon, Maramak, Bukidnon intends to apply for an accreditation in civil society organization, the province Bukidnon. This, the organization empowers the farmers, strengthen cooperatives, promote the sustainable livelihoods by uniting communities. The association fosters inclusive growth, supports agribusiness ventures, and applies Bukidnon's rural economy through collective effort and shared prosperity. The endorsement reflects the organization's dedication to community empowerment, transparency, active civic engagement by supporting its application for CISO's accreditation. We recognize the organization's capacity to contribute meaningfully to policy formulation, program implementation, and monitoring of local development efforts. The committee determined that Bukidnon Agrarian Reform Agribusiness Multi-Purpose Association Incorporated address adheres completely to all the requirements for application civil society organizations' accreditation as per DILG memorandum circular number 2025 dash 060. Recommendation of the committee, Mr. Chair, after careful review hereby recommend for the approval of the Bukidnon Agrarian Reform Agribusiness Multi-Purpose Association Incorporated for the application for civil society organization accreditation as per DILG memorandum circular number 2025 dash 060 located at Porokten, Duloon, Maramak, Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the scope of this agreement to enact. So recommended for the approval adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Discussions, objections, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Item number two, Mr. Chairman, again, this is joint committee report on the Committee on Rules and Privileges to which was referred a letter and endorsement dated November 4, 2025 from our Provincial Planning Development Coordinator, Civil Society Organization, Mr. Chair, Engineer Giselle B. Magobat. The pertinent documents submitted by the Bukidnon Referee and Coach Association with an organization address located Porokto, Population Valencia City, Bukidnon signify the intent to apply for civil society organization accreditation. This Bukidnon Referee Coach Association, Mr. Chairman, is to intend to apply accredited civil society in the province of Bukidnon. It is essential to strengthen the sports development, ensure the fair play, uphold discipline local competitions by fostering professionalism and integrity. The association empowers communities, promotes youth engagement, and builds pride in Bukidnon sporting identity. This endorsement reflects the organization's dedication to community empowerment, transparency, active civic engagement by supporting its application for the CISO accreditation. We recognize the organization's capacity to contribute meaningfully to policy formulation, program implementation, and monitoring to local development efforts. The committee determined that the Bukidnon Referee and Coach Association adheres completely to all requirements for the application for civil society organization accreditation as per DILG memorandum circular number 2025 dash 060. Thus, the committee, Mr. Chair, recommends for the approval of the Bukidnon Referee Coach Association for the application for civil society organization accreditation located at Porokto, Population Valencia City, Bukidnon, province Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the scope of this agreement to enact. So recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, discussions, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding to item number um item number three, Mr. Chair. This is committee report on the Committee on Self-Service and Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance number 009 dash 2025 of the 16th SB. Approved October 9, 2025, by Don Carlos Bukidnon entitled an ordinance and funding the position of Executive Assistant 5 under the Municipal Mayor's Office to fund Executive Assistant in the same office. Have considered the same if I submit the findings, comments, and recommendations of the committee. The ordinance seeks to unfund the position Executive Assistant 5 under the Municipal Mayor's Office to fund Executive Assistant 2 in the Municipality of Don Carlos Bukidnon. The committee has found that Executive Assistant 5 position may be a bullish as the highest allowable level for the Executive Assistant position under the Municipal Mayor's Office is Executive Assistant 2 pursuant to Department of Budget and Management Manual on Position Classification and Compensation, Chapter 9. Recommendation of the committee after thorough review and study hereby recommends for the approval of ordinance number 009 dash 2025 of the 16th SB approved on October 9, 2025 of the Sanguin Bayan of Don Carlos Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sanguin Bayan concerned to pass. Recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, discussions, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Proceeding to item number four, Mr. Chair, this joint committee report on the Committee on Self-Service and Rules and Privileges. Committee Report number 2025 dash C dash 041 and Committee Report number 2025 dash R dash 438 to which was referred an ordinance number 1280 dash 2025 of the 5th Regular Session approved on October 28, 2025, by Don Muluk Bukidnon entitled an ordinance creating the new position the Municipal Government of Don Muluk Bukidnon determining its duties and responsibilities and providing the funds therefore. Have considered the same if I submit the findings, comments, and recommendations of the committee. This ordinance aims to establish the new positions specifying the duties and responsibilities in the Municipal Government of Don Muluk Bukidnon. The committee found that the position titles and the qualification standard requirements of the proposed position for creation are compliant with the LBC 137 and 2023 updated CAC QS respectively. Recommendation of the committee after careful review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number 1280 dash 2025 of the 5th Regular Session approved on October 28, 2025 by Don Muluk Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sanguin Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, discussions, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, the last item, Mr. Chairman, this is a joint committee report on the Committee on Health and Rules and Privileges. The Committee Report number 2025 dash N dash 035 and Committee Report number 2025 dash R dash 439. The uh to which was referred an ordinance number 2025 dash 545 of the 12th SB during the 7th Regular Session approved November 3, 2025, of Sanguinang Bayan, Kalilangan, province of Bukidnon entitled an ordinance institutionalizing the Republic Act number 11037 otherwise known as the Masustansyang Pakain para sa Batang Pilipino Act in the Municipality of Kalilangan. Have considered the same and hereby submits the comments, findings, and recommendations of the committee. Perusal of the subject ordinance herein it can be gleaned that the same sought to institute Republic Act number 11037 otherwise known as the Masustansyang Pakain para sa Batang Pilipino Act in the Municipality of Kalilangan, province of Bukidnon. This ordinance was anchored in Republic Act 11037 entitled an act institutionalizing the national feeding program for the undernourished children in the public daycare, kindergarten, elementary school to combat hunger and undernutrition among Filipino children and appropriating funds therefore which the state recognizes the vital role of the youth in the nation building and shall promote and protect the physical, moral, spiritual, intellectual, and social well-being in recognition of the demonstrated relationship between fund and nutrition and the capacity of the student to develop and learn. The state shall establish a comprehensive national feeding program that will address the problem of the undernutrition among Filipino children. Recommendation of the committee hereby recommend for the approval of the municipal ordinance number 2025 dash 454 455 ah did I 545 of the 12th SB. 7th Regular Session approved on November 3, 2025, by Kalilangan, province of Bukidnon for be proper in order and within the competence of Sanguin Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended for the approval and adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, discussions, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding now to item number 6 to 9, may we now recognize the Vice Chairman, I think, as requested by the Chairman of the Committee. The gentleman from the Second Legislative District, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board Member Attorney Holy Simontanto.
Board Member Monsanto is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. For and in behalf of the Chairman of the Committee on Laws, ah Justice and Human Rights and also on the Rules and Privileges, I am making this committee report on the following measures, Mr. Chair. The first, the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance number 31 dash 2025 series of 2025 approved on October 20, 2025 of the Sanguinang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon entitled an ordinance enacting the rules on administrative investigation by the Sanguinang Bayan in the Municipality of Kabanglasan Bukidnon and imposing fees thereof. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendation. As to the findings, the ordinance aims to establish a clear, uniform, and enforceable rules governing administrative investigations filed against elected barangay officials within the territorial within the territorial conducted by the Sanguinang Bayan of Kabanglasan. This includes the grounds for administrative disciplinary action, how to file a complaint, notices, answers, filing fees, determination and imposition of preventive suspensions, the preliminary conference, process of formal investigations, rules of evidence, report of the committee, voting and rendition of the decision, motion for reconsideration, penalties of reprimand, censure, or suspension, execution of the decision, and how and where an appeal is made. The ordinance is anchored in the mandate of the Sanguinang Bayan to guarantee that administrative investigations are carried out impartially, efficiently, and in strict observance of due process requirements. As to the recommendations, the committees after careful study hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number 31 dash 2025 series of 2025 approved on October 20, 2025 of the Sanguinang Bayan of Kabanglasan Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the scope of the Sanguinang Bayan to enact. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Second, discussions, hirinan, motion is approved.
Next, eh the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance number 003 dash 2025 of the 60th SB enacted on September 2, 2025 of the Sanguinang Bayan of Don Carlos Bukidnon entitled an ordinance amending section 4, 5, and 8 of the Sanguinang Bayan Ordinance number 197 dash 2025 entitled an ordinance creating the Don Carlos Polytechnic College Charter of this municipality. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, the amendatory ordinance seeks to refine and update key provisions of the Don Carlos Polytechnic College Charter specifically section 4, 5, and 8. The amendments aim to clearly enumerate the composition of the governing board and provide honorarium to the members of the Board of Trustees. In addition, the ordinance defines the terms of office of the Chairman, Vice Chairman, and the Chairman of the Committee on Education of the Sanguinang Bayan as well as the representatives of the faculty, student body, alumni association, and industry business sector and non-government organizations specifying that their tenure shall be co-terminals with the terms of office of their respective positions. The committee has determined that the Don Carlos Municipal Ordinance as enacted by the Sanguinang Bayan adheres completely to all relevant laws, rules, and regulations. As to the recommendation, the committee after careful study hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number 003 dash 2025 of the 60th SB enacted on September 2, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Don Carlos Bukidnon for being proper in order and within the scope of the Sanguinang Bayan to enact. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Any discussions, objections, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Next was ordinance number 2025 dash 2247 of the 12th Regular Session approved on October 9, 2025 of the Sanguinang Bayan of Manolo Fortiz Bukidnon entitled an ordinance establishing guidelines for the installation and maintenance of functional CCTV cameras along major roads ally alleys and sidewalks within Manolo Fortiz Bukidnon to enhance evidence gathering and in case filings and prevent gender-based sexual harassment in streets and public spaces. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, the ordinance known as the Manolo Fortiz CCTV Ordinance for the prevention of gender-based sexual harassment in streets and public spaces aims to set rules for installing, maintaining, and monitoring CCTV cameras along major roads, alleys, and sidewalks in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiz Bukidnon. This is to help prevent gender-based sexual harassment in public places and to provide clear evidence that can be used when filing of cases or legal complaints. However, this ordinance failed to attach an affidavit of publication as mandated by Article 114 of the Implementing Rules and Regulation of Republic Acts 2160 otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. An ordinance with a penal provision shall be posted at the conspicuous places in the provincial capital or city or municipal or barangay hall as the case may be for a minimum of three consecutive weeks and it shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation where available within the territorial jurisdiction of the LGU concerned. As to the recommendations, the committees after careful study hereby recommend that ordinance number 2025 dash 2247 of the 12th Regular Session approved on October 9, 2025, the Sanguinang Bayan of Manolo Fortiz Bukidnon be referred back to its origins for compliance of the aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Second, any discussions, objections, hirinan, the motion is approved.
Next is ordinance number 11 dash 2025 of the 10th SB. 12th Regular Session approved on October 10, 2025, the Sanguinang Paluso de Valencia City Bukidnon entitled an ordinance institutionalizing the establishment of Timbanganang Bayan providing penalties for violations thereof and appropriating funds therefore in the city of Valencia. Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, the ordinance seeks to legalize and fully operationalize the Implementation of Republic Act number 11706 known as the Timbanganang Bayan Law within the jurisdiction of the city of Valencia. It aims to provide a clear and comprehensive framework for the establishment, installation, maintenance, calibration, and protection of Timbanganang Bayan units publicly accessible and government-owned weighing scales or instrument intended to ensure accuracy in weights and measures. Through this ordinance, the city government endeavors to promote transparency, fairness, and consumer protection in local markets, public trading areas, and other commercial spaces where goods are bought and sold by weight. By ensuring the proper use, regular inspection, and straight safeguarding of this weighing instrument, the measure supports the fair treatment of both consumers and vendors, enhances market integrity and upholds the standard mandated under the national law. In the course of the committee's review, however, it was observed that the penalties and sanctions prescribed in the ordinance run contrary to the limitations set under the Local Government Code. Accordingly, there's a need to revisit and rationalize penalty provisions to ensure that they remain reasonable and forceable. to ensure that they remain reasonable, enforceable, and consistent with existing laws, local capacities, and the principles of fairness. Additionally, the ordinance did not include an affidavit of publication pursuant to Article 114 of the Implementing Rules and Regulations of Republic Act Number 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. Any ordinance containing penal provision must be posted in the conspicuous places within the provincial capital or in the city, municipal, municipal or barangay hall as applicable, for at least three consecutive weeks, and must be published in a newspaper of general circulation where available, where that, within the territorial jurisdiction of the, of the concerned LGO. As to the recommendation, the committees after careful study hereby recommend that ordinance Number 11-2025, the 10th SB, 12th Regular Session, approved on October 10, 2025, of the San Guniyang Palungso de Valencia Bukinon, be referred back to its origins for compliance with aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Discussions, objections, hearing, and the motion is approved.
May I allow to proceed with the committee report on the Committee on Appropriations, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now proceeding to the committee report, joint committee report with the Committee on Appropriations and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred the following measures. First, appropriation ordinance Number 2025-08 of the 17th SB, 11th Regular Session enacted on September 15, 2025, of the San Guniyang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukinon, entitled, an ordinance appropriating, approving rather, the adjustment of annual budget general fund for fiscal year 2025 of this municipality from 224,406,981 pesos to 224,169,408 pesos, a difference of 237,573 pesos due to national tax allocation reduction from 201,816,981 pesos to 201,579,408 pesos per DBM, Local Budget Memorandum Number 90-A, dated December 26, 2024. As to the findings, the ordinance, the ordinance aims to approve the adjustment of the 2025 General Fund Annual Budget due to the reduction of the national tax allocation as provided in DBM Local Budget Memorandum Number 90-A in the Municipality of Kadingilan Bukinon. Upon review, the local finance committee recommends approval subject to compliance with Section 324 of RA 7160, which outlines the budgetary requirements of local government units, including the proper allocation of funds for mandatory obligations, statutory and contractual expenditures, and adherence to budgetary limitations. Thus, the committee, as to the recommendations, the committee after review hereby recommend for approval of appropriation ordinance Number 2025-08 of the 70th SB, 11th Regular Session, enacted on September 15, 2025, the San Guniyang Bayan of Kadingilan Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the San Guniyang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Second, discussions, objections, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 16, 016, rather, of the 60th SB Series of 2025, approved on October 8, 2025, of the San Guniyang Bayan of Kitauta Bukinon, entitled, an ordinance authorizing Honorable Edwin P. Abukayan, Municipal Mayor, to use savings from non-office, MOO, and other mood of various offices amounting to 593,953 pesos to augment the deficiency budget lines in the approved General Fund Annual Budget for calendar year 2025. The committee have considered the same and do hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, the ordinance aims to authorize the Municipal Mayor to use savings from various offices, MOO, to augment the deficient budget lines in the 2025 General Fund Annual Budget in the Municipality of Kitauta Bukinon. Upon review, the local finance committee recommends approval and observes that the attached statement of appropriation, allotment, obligations, and balances as of August 31, 2025 shows sufficient appropriated funds to cover the proposed augmentations. Thus, as to the recommendations, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 016, 60th SB Series of 2025, approved on October 8, 2025, the San Guniyang Bayan of Kitauta Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the San Guniyang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Second, objections, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 25-11, approved on October 13, 2025, of the San Guniyang Bayan of Libuna Bukinon, entitled, an ordinance amending the title certain whereas and sections 1, 2, 4, and 5 of ordinance Number 22-22, entitled, an ordinance giving due recognition and granting cash incentive to Okto Ginarians and Nona Ginarians as part of the municipality's effort to support senior citizen in the Municipality of Libuna Bukinon and appropriating funds therefore thereof, and presenting the ordinance as amended in its entirety. The ordinance, as to the findings, aims to revise the title selected where as closest and sections 1, 2, 4, and 5 of the ordinance Number 2022-2022, which grants recognition and cash incentives to Okto Ginarians and Nona Ginarians in Libuna Bukinon and to present the fully amended ordinance. Upon review, the local finance committee, of the, upon review of the local finance committee, the LGO have the authority to enact ordinances for the general welfare of the constituents, but this should not be contrary to an existing law. Granting incentives to Okto Ginarians and Nona Ginarians in the Municipality of Libuna Bukinon is consistent with the intent of Republic Act 11982, also known as the Expanded Centenarian Act, which honors Filipino Okto Ginarians and Nona Ginarians and grant them benefits and privileges provided it is carried out subject to the availability of funds and subject to compliance with all applicable budgeting, accounting, and auditing laws. As to the recommendations, the committee after review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 25-11, approved on October 13, 2025, the San Guniyang Bayan of Libuna Bukinon for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the San Guniyang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Objections, discussions, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Next is ordinance Number 25-12, approved on October 13, 2025, the San Guniyang Bayan of Libuna Bukinon, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the supplemental budget Number 3 of General Fund for calendar year 2025 amounting to 11,121,915 pesos. As to the findings, upon local, upon review, the local finance committee finds that an appropriation ordinance provides the legal basis for the municipality to allocate funds for specific spending activities. However, supplemental budgets Numbers 1, 2, and 3 for calendar year 2025 from the Municipality of Libuna Bukinon has, have not yet been submitted to this office for technical review. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend that ordinance Number 25-12, approved on October 13, 2025, the San Guniyang Bayan of Libuna Bukinon, be referred back to its origins for compliance with aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Discussions, objections, hearing, and the motion is approved.
As to the next is ordinance Number 10-2025 of the 10th SB, 11th Regular Session, enacted on September 30, 2025, of the San Guniyang Palungso de Valencia City Bukinon, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the augmentation of funds from other personnel benefits appropriations under the General Fund for Fiscal Year 2025 in the amount of 35,684,960 pesos and 90 in tabos to cover the payment of services rendered from July to September 2025 by 136 personnel occupying unfunded plantilla positions in the city government of Valencia. As to the findings, the ordinance aims to authorize augmentations of the 2025 General Fund to cover the payment of services rendered from July to September 2025 by personnel occupying unfunded plantilla positions in the city government of Valencia. Upon review, the local finance committee notes that the annual budget of the LGO for calendar year 2025 was referred back for compliance due to certain deficiencies noted, particularly under the other compensation item of personnel services wherein the subject ordinance was utilized as a source of savings to cover salaries and wages of personnel. Hence, the LGO is advised to address the foregoing concern prior to the issuance of comments or recommendations on the matter. Thus, the committee after review hereby recommend that ordinance Number 10-2025 of the 10th SB, 11th Regular Session, enacted on September 20, 25, the San Guniyang Palungso de Valencia City Bukinon, be referred back to its origins for compliance with aforementioned findings. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, discussions, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Chair, is the Joint Committee Report and the Committee on God Government and Public Accountability, Quasay Judicial Functions, and Ethics, and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred ordinance Number 25-13, approved November 5, 2025, the San Guniyang Bayan of Libuna Bukinon, entitled, an ordinance adopting the Citizens Charter Manual, 2025 Edition of the Municipal Government of Libuna Bukinon. As to the findings, the committee founds that the ordinance is in accordance with the implementation of Republic Act 11032, otherwise known as the Ease of the Wing Business and Efficient Government Service Delivery Act of 2018, which provides that the local government unit must establish their respective citizens charter to uphold standards of quality service, delivery, and ethical behavior in public affairs and property administration, and to prevent corruption and bribery in the government operations. The adoptions of such citizens charter manual is expected to enhance public service in all agencies and offices of the municipality. Thus, the committee after careful review hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance Number 25-13, approved on November 25, November, rather, November 5, 2025, of the San Guniyang Bayan of Libuna Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the San Guniyang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Second, objections, discussions, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Montanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to item Number 16, Mr. Chair, for the new business for the day, Mr. Chair. As requested by the Chairman of the Committee and the author of this, I think, uh, this is authored by the Deputy President, Mr. Chair, and he requested to, in behalf of him, I would render his report.
Go ahead, Majority Leader.
So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution congratulating and commending the Honorable Sultan Dindo D. Dillian, the Councilor of Malabala City, Province of Bukinon, on his election as Senior Board of Director of the Philippine Counselors League, Regional Council Region 10. Whereas, the Philippine Counselors League is a national organization composed of all the duly-elected counselors in the Philippines dedicated for promoting effective local legislation, capacity building, and public service excellence. The election of the regional officers was conducted November 19, 2020, 19 to 20, 2025, during the capacity development training on inclusive and participatory governance and the organization of the regional officers held at Limkit Kai Block Hotel, Kagayan di Oro City. Whereas, the PCL Region 10 councils play a vital role in strengthening the leadership, collaboration, and policy direction among the local legislators across northern Mindanao. Whereas, the Honorable Sultan Dindo D. Dillian, Councilor of City of Malabala and Board of Director of the PCL Bukinon Federation has been elected as the Senior Board of Directors in the Philippine Counselors League, Regional Counselors Region 10. Whereas, his election to his distinguished position brings pride and honor to the Province of Bukinon as it reflects the trust, confidence, and recognition of his peers in his leadership, dedication, and exemplary performance as a public servant. Whereas, the San Guniyang Palungso de Bukinon recognizes the, and celebrates the significant achievements as a milestone in Councilor Sultan Dindo D. Dillian, the public service career, and as a testament to the dedication, integrity, and excellence that he brings to legislation work. Whereas, this honor will not only serve as inspiration for him to do more for his constituents in his respective city, but also for the whole province and the entire region. Now therefore, on the motion of this representation, Julie, she candid by the members of the San Guniyang Palungso present, bid resolved, as it hereby resolved, to pass the resolution congratulating, commending the Honorable Sultan Dindo D. Dillian, Councilor of Malabala City, Province of Bukinon, on his election Senior Board of Director of the Philippine Counselors League, PCL Regional Council Region 10. The resolution further that this copy of the resolution be furnished to the City Councilor Sultan Dindo D. Dillian for his information and as a token of recognition and appreciation of the San Guniyang Palungso and the people of Bukinon. Signed, Provincial Office of Board Member, PCL Bukinon Federation President Ramondo Ismerista Junior. So, Mr. Chair, so moving for the passage of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second, discussions, objections, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Honorable Presenting Officer, proceeding to item Number 17, Item 19. May we now again recognize the gentleman coming from the fourth, the Second Legislative District, Mr. Chair, the Honorable Board Member Attorney, Holy Si Montanto.
Board Member Montanto is recognized. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, this is a resolution, Mr. Chair, of congratulation, uh, particularly a resolution congratulating and commending the Bukinon State University, or BOKSO, for being recognized by the Professional Regulation Commission, PRC, as top one performing school in the November 2025 Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination, Mr. Chair. This is an award given to the institutions who has achieved a 100% passing average, 100% passers for the, for those who take the Philippine, the Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination, Mr. Chair. The school has allowed, there are 129 PNL E-takers from BOKSO, and they have achieved a perfect passing percentage and was officially recognized by the PRC as top one performing school during the November 2025 PNL E. Now aside from that, the BOKSO also, of the 129 PNL E-takers from BOKSO, it has produced two who placed in the top 10 on the nurses examinations. That will be the subject of the two other resolutions, Mr. Chair. And with this outstanding performance of the institution, it reflects dedication and commitment to academic excellence, high-quality instructions, and provide an educational heaven for aspiring nurses. Where this achievement has brought the highest honor to the institution as well as the province of Bukinon and has strengthened the reputation of the education within the province. Thus, I move for the passing of this resolution, Mr. Chair, congratulating the BOKSO being the top one performing school of the Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination, November 2025. Moving for the approval of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Objections, discussions, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Uh, this is, in addition to that, Mr. Chair, this is one of the, the concern or area that will be taken by our tourism. This is an educational tourism, Mr. Chair. There are a lot of people coming in Bukinon to enroll in our school, BOKSO. In fact, I was informed, uh, sa daghan na't mga mga katong gusto mo apply, daghan po na dismayan. No, in fact, they have been conducting examinations in Agusan Sur, Misamis Occidental, Missor, and thousands of students wanted to avail of the privilege ng maka-enroll sa tong BOKSO. Not only in BOKSO, but also in Simyo. We have, the province of Bukinon is being, uh, thankful that we have two state universities. So part po ni siya siguro sa atong katanggino naging academic tourism. Makaattract kita sa mga daghan tao to enroll here in the province. Dili lang ang nursing, kundi even ang atong college of law. We have produced several lawyers, no, even higher than the number of lawyers in some school in Kagayan di Oro. And with the accreditation now of the College of Medicine, also sa atong BOKSO, yes? So that will really promote sa atong province as one of the destinations for students uh, who wanted to achieve a career in their personal development also. So, may I proceed, Mr. Chair, to the next resolution?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is a resolution congratulating and commending Raymond Sakari Salit U for placing, uh, for a while, placing fifth, another, placing fifth in the November 2025 Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination with a rating of 93%. As a background, this student, oh, this achiever is the son of Mrs. Melu Jane Salit U and Mr. Ramon, Raymond Paanut U and a resident of Blasonis Road, kasisang Malabala City, Bukinon. He has been an achiever in his elementary, uh, high school and even in his college education, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. U successfully placed fifth in the 2025 Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination conducted by the PRC, as already stated, with an impressive rating of 93%. This outstanding achievement has brought honor and pride to the community and has served as an inspiration to the youth and aspiring nursing students. Uh, the exceptional performance of Raymond Sakari Salit U demonstrate dedication, excellence, and commitment to the nursing professions. Moving for the approval of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Discussions, objections, hearing, and the motion is approved.
Last is also a congratulatory resolutions, a resolution congratulating and commending Vernal Gis Vasaya Asparin for placing 10th in the November 2025, also Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination. Nurse Licenseure Examination with a rating of ninety-two percent. As a background, this achiever is the son of Mrs. Violeta Vasaya Asparin and Mr. Ariel Asyon Asparin, and a resident of NHA Phase Three Extension, Kasisang Malibalay City, Bukidnon. Ang atong dua kaachievers are both BOCO and both residents of Kasisang where this undersigned BM is also a resident, roggagam bright siguro janapitan. And this achiever also, Mr. Chair, has also several achievements, even in his elementary, high school, and even in the college education, Mr. Chair. Thus, he also successfully placed tenth in the November twenty-twenty-five Philippine Nurse Licenseure Examination conducted by the PRC, as stated, with an impressive rating of ninety-two percent. His achievement is hoped to serve as an inspiration to the youth and the aspiring nursing students. And this exceptional performance of the said Vernal Gis Vasaya Asparin demonstrate dedication, excellence, and commitment to the nursing profession. Thus, I move for the approval of the said congratulatory resolution, Mr. Chair.
Objections, discussions, hearings, and the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Monsanto, Majority Floor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding now, Honorable Presiding Officer, to item number twenty. Okay, and this is a proposed resolution by our temporary Presiding Officer, Mr. Chair. If he, our Presiding Officer be allowed?
Yes, please, go ahead, Majority Floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution congratulating, commending the Honorable commending the Honorable Armando Junior Isimalista, the Philippine Counselors League, Bukidnon Federation President, Province of Bukidnon, on his election as Philippine Counselors League Regional Council Chairman, Region Ten, and authored by our Presiding Officer to this decision. Whereas, the Philippine Counselors League is a national organization composed of all duly-elected counselors in the Philippines dedicated to promoting the effective local legislation, capacity building, and the public service excellence. The election was conducted pursuant to Department of International Government Memorandum Circular Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Zero Eight Zero, continuing the local legislative education program of the Philippine Counselors League for calendar year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven. And the DILG Memorandum Circular Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Zero Five Zero, election of the PCL Provincial Federation, City Chapter Regional Council Officers for the term twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight. Whereas, the election of regional officers was conducted November nineteen to twenty, twenty-twenty-five during the capacity development training on inclusive and participatory governance, and reorganization of regional officers held at Limkitkai Blocks Hotel, Kagayan, Dioro City. Whereas, the Honorable Armando Junior Isimalista, PCL Bukidnon Federation President, has demonstrated exemplary leadership, dedication, commitment to the public service in the province of Bukidnon. Whereas, that election as Special Regional Council Chairman for Region Ten is testament to his outstanding performance, integrity, and the confidence vested in him by his fellow counselors throughout northern Mindanao. Whereas, the Sangguneang Panaluwigan of Bukidnon recognizes and celebrates the significant achievement as the milestone in PCL Bukidnon Federation President, Armando Junior Isimalista, the public service career as a testament to the dedication, integrity, and excellence that he brings to legislative work. Now, therefore, on motion by this representation, if the author allows also, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead, Board.
So, be it resolved as it hereby resolved to pass the resolution congratulating, commending the Honorable Armando Junior Isimalista, Philippine Counselors League, Bukidnon Federation President, Province of Bukidnon, on his election as Philippine Counselors League, the Regional Council Chairman, Region Ten, and resolve further that this copy of this resolution be furnished to Honorable Armando Junior Isimalista for his information and as token of recognition and appreciation by the Sangguneang Panaluwigan and the people of Bukidnon. Signed, the Board Member, Fourth Legislative District, Province of Bukidnon, the Honorable Board Member, Ranolpo Jose Z. Pipito Junior. Mr. Chair, so moving for the passage of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Objections, discussions, hearings, and the motion disapproved.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Proceeding now to item number twenty-one, may we now recognize the Honorable Board Member, Marlo Brando D. Dylayan of the Second Legislative District.
Bobby.
Ay, Ababijay, sorry, Mr. Chair, the Honorable Board Member, Bobby D. Dylayan, Mr. Chair.
Board Member D. Dylayan, Bobby D. Dylayan, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. And we have here a resolution, proposed resolution number zero-nine-five-twenty-twenty-five of the twenty-eight SP, a resolution commending National Master K. Adrian I. Ilar of the Bukidnon for securing four medals in the twenty-twenty-five Batang Pinoy Chess Championship, fifteen-under boys category organized by the Philippine Sports Commission and held in General Santos on October twenty-five to thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, and authored by this representation. Whereas, the Batang Pinoy National Championships is a prestigious national sports event organized by the Philippine Sports Commission, aimed at discovering and developing young Filipino athletes from across the country. Whereas, National Master Adrian Ilar, a fifteen-year-old chess prodigy from Meramak, Bukidnon, and a proud representative of the province of Bukidnon, demonstrated remarkable skill, discipline, and sportsmanship during the twenty-twenty-five Batang Pinoy Chess Championship held in General Santos City on October twenty-five to thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Whereas, National Master K. Adrian Ilar achieved an exceptional record in the fifteen-under boys category, garnering one gold medal in the standard chess, one gold medal in rapid chess, one silver medal in nine-hundred-and-sixty rapid chess, and one bronze medal in blitz chess. Whereas, his exemplary performance brings honor and pride not only to the province of Bukidnon, but also serves as an inspiration to the youth to pursue excellence, perseverance, and integrity in both academics and sports. Now, therefore, be it resolved as it is hereby resolved to commend National Master K. Adrian I. Ilar of Bukidnon for securing four medals in the twenty-twenty-five Batang Pinoy Chess Championship organized by the Philippine Sports Commission and held in General Santos City on October twenty-five, thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to National Master K. Adrian Ilar as a token of appreciation and recognition for bringing pride and honor to the province of Bukidnon. In addition, Mr. Chair, National Master K. Adrian Ilar is the first titled player as National Master here in the province of Bukidnon. So, siya ginang pinakauna ng National Masters sa Bukidnon. Dugan na kami, as a chess player, ako player mangiko dugan na. That is our dream, dugan na munang apangan do'ng na atay mahimo dalinga master sa Bukidnon. So, this is a dream come true.
Kinse mas maayunin niyo, board? Kinse mas maayunin niyo?
Sa unang panahon, medyo
Napasa na, napasa na.
Okay, sa panapanahon mo ng chess, panapanahon ng imong ka kusog, naaging panahon, medyo kusog-kusog ikaw, pero, ah, karoon, maraguan ako'y bautan, azaya. Ah, bataan on niya, sige, study, daghan po kayo variation karoon sa chess bago. So, maginang, nakukuha niya ang titled as National Master, first in the province of Bukidnon. So, for that, Mr. Chair, I, moving for the approval of this resolution.
Second, objections, discussions, hearings, and the motion is approved. Thank you, Board Member Bobby D. Dylayan, Majority Floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, from item number twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, by this representation, Mr. Chairman, from twenty-five to thirty, as requested by the Chairman of the Committee. So, in behalf of him, I also made this representation for the, all these items from twenty-five to thirty, Mr. Chair. For item number twenty-two, may proceed, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Majority Floor.
This is a resolution congratulating the Central Mindanao University for bugging the top one ranking in the recent Philippine Nursing Licenseure Examination last November twenty-twenty-five, and for being recognized as the top one school nationwide. Authorized by this representation, Mr. Chairman. Whereas, the Central Mindanao University, one of the premier university in the northern Mindanao, has once again demonstrated its academic excellence and commitment to the quality education by achieving the top one ranking nationwide in the recent Philippine Nursing Licenseure Examination, thereby bringing the honor and prestige not only to the institution, but also to the province of Bukidnon and the entire Mindanao region. Whereas, this remarkable feat is a testament to the university's unwavering dedication to nurturing the competent, compassionate, and globally-competitive nursing professionals who embody the values of service, integrity, and excellence qualities that are indispensable in the healthcare sector and the nation building. Whereas, the recognition of the Central Mindanao University as the top one nursing school in the Philippines affirms the institution's strong academic foundation, the rigorous training programs, and holistic approach to education, which have consistently produced the graduates who excel in license or examinations and contribute significantly to the advancement of health service in the country and abroad. Whereas, this milestone achievement serves as an inspiration to other higher education institution in the region, providing that with visionary leadership, dedicated faculty, motivated students, excellence is attainable even the major challenges and limitations faced by the state universities and colleges. The success of the CMU in the Philippine Nurses Licenseure Examination further strengthens its reputation as a center of excellence in education, research, and extension services, thereby reinforcing its vital role in empowering the communities, uplifting the lives, and contributing to sustainable development in Bukidnon, Mindanao, and in the nation as a whole. Whereas, the Sangguneang Panaluwigan recognize the achievement of the Central Mindanao University as one of the indispensable partners of the provincial government in promoting the culture of excellence and is part of the country. Therefore, the motion of this representation severely seconded by all the board members presented in a symbol in decision, be it resolved as it hereby resolved, congratulating the Mindanao University, Central Mindanao University, for bugging the top one ranking in the recent Philippine Nursing Licenseure Examination last November twenty-twenty-five, and for being recognized as top one school nationwide. Resolve further that copies of this resolution be furnished to Central Mindanao University through the Office of University President, Atmos One, Meramak, Bukidnon, signed by this representation. So, moving for the passage of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second, query from the chair, Majority Floor, just a quick question. Who decides the top one CC rank sa ano, actually, parihan mo resolution ni
PRC.
Category.
Oh, sa katung, sa tag nagtake, nagtake, yeah.
Ah, okay. Ah, okay. So, sa one-hundred, katungang numbers of takers sila nagtop, ah, okay.
So, namagatong number of student bitawang nagtake o nagpassar?
Ah, nagilog sila sa top one, ah, anyway, um, ini mo discussions, observations, hearings, and the motion is approved.
Proceeding to item number twenty-three, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution congratulating Central Mindanao University for bugging the top four ranking in the November twenty-twenty-five nutritionist dietitian license examination, and for being recognized as top four school nationwide. So, sa dietitian po niya, Mr. Chair, nutrition, hindi, hindi, nutrition dietetics.
Dugan na po nila.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the remarkable achievements underscore the university dedication to producing the competent, service-oriented, globally-competitive professionals in the field of nutrition dietetics who are vital in promoting public health, addressing the malnutrition, advancing the food security wellness programs across the nation. Whereas, the Central Mindanao University's top four nutritionist dietitian school in the Philippines affirms the strength of its academic programs, the rigor of its training, and the holistic approach it employs, in nurturing the students to excel in both theoretical knowledge and practical application, ensuring that the graduates are well-prepared to meet the demands of the profession. Whereas, the success of the Central Mindanao University in the national dietitian license examination further strengthened its reputation as a center of excellence in education, research, and extension services, thereby enforcing its vital role in powering the communities, uplifting the lives, contributing to sustainable development in Bukidnon, Mindanao, and the entire country. Whereas, the Sangguneang Panaluwigan recognizes the achievements of Central Mindanao University as the indispensable partners in the provincial government according, promoting the culture of excellence in part of the country. By motion of this presentation, Mr. Chair. So, moving for the passage of resolution congratulating Central Mindanao University for the bugging top four ranking in the November twenty-twenty-five nutritionist dietitian license examination, and for being recognized as top four school nationwide. So, moving for the passage of resolution of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second, discussions, objections, hearings, and the motion is approved.
For item number twenty-four, Mr. Chairman, this is again a resolution congratulating, commending Ms. Anna Babez Bahian Andoy for bugging the top eight in the November twenty-twenty-five of the nutritionist dietitian license examination. Whereas, Anna Babez Bahian Andoy, a resident of Nagagan, Bukidnon, has successfully completed his degree as Bachelor of Science in Nutrition and Dietetics, graduated with the distinct honor of magna cum laude. A recognition reserved for student who have consistently demonstrated academic excellence, discipline, and perseverance throughout their college, collegiate journey. Whereas, her achievements as magna cum laude is a testament to her intellectual capacity, diligence, and commitment to her studies qualities that are indispensable in the practice of nutrition dietetics, a profession that plays a vital role promoting health, preventing disease, and ensuring food security wellness in communities. Whereas, Ms. Andoy further distinguished herself the bugging top eight in the November twenty-twenty-five, the nutritionist dietitian license examination, a national recognition that affirms her competence, dedication, readiness to serve as a professional in the field, thereby bringing the pride and honor not only to her family and the alma mater, but also to the municipality of Nagagan and the entire province of Bukidnon. Whereas, the province of Bukidnon recognize that achievements such as hers have deep the image of the locality, showcasing the talent, resilience, and potential of its people, and affirming the province's commitment to fostering education as a pathway to progress and empowerment. Therefore, upon the motion by this representation, Mr. Chairman, moving for the passage of resolution, commending Ms. Anna Babez Bahian Andoy for bugging the top eight, November twenty-twenty-five nutritionist dietitian license examination, copy of this resolution be furnished to the provincial governor's office of Ms. Andoy as token of our admission, recognition of her outstanding accomplishment to continue the pursuit of excellence in the professional career and to remain an inspiration to her peers and the community. So, moving for the passage of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second, discussions, objections, hearings, and the motion is approved.
Proceeding, Mr. Chair, to item number twenty-five to thirty, Mr. Chairman, these are all the communication coming from the office of the, our provincial governor, Mr. Chairman. So, an omnibus motion for the passage of the approval of the request of our provincial governor for item number twenty-five, Mr. Chairman, this is a memorandum agreement by and between the provincial government of Bukidnon and the Department of Health Center for Health Development, Northern Mindanao. This is with regards to the transfer of funds by the latter to the former amounted to the thirty-four million three hundred thousand pesos for the expansion upgrading of the BPMC, the geriatric ward under the Health Facility Enhance Program, twenty-twenty-five, subject to terms condition set out in the memorandum agreement. And also, item number twenty-six, Mr. Chairman, this is term partnership between the provincial government of Bukidnon and the Halaad to Health Foundation Philippines. This is a non, the, the Halaad to Health Foundation Philippines is a non-government, nonprofit organization committed to provide community health education and supervise the clinical observation for its international pre-medical volunteers in the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, Meramak, effective January fifteen, twenty-twenty-six to February thirteen, twenty-twenty-six, subject to the twenty-six, subject to the terms and condition as set out in the term of partnership, Mr. Chair? For item number twenty-seven, Mr. Chairman, this is a contract agreement for the construction slope protection at the back of the Kowa Building located Capital Compound. The one contractor, the Jorbees Construction Corporation, for the contract cost of three million nine hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred fifty-three point ninety-five. For item number twenty-eight, Mr. Chairman, this is again a supply and delivery of IT equipment for the various offices, the Exicom Computer Cell Services, Mr. Chairman, eight six hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty, Bismis Computer Center, two million five hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred, for the grand total of three million three hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred sixty. This is considered urgent, Mr. Chair? Item number twenty-nine, Mr. Chairman, this is a supply and delivery of one lot, the furniture and office equipment for the one supplier DP Enterprises for the contract cost of two hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred ninety-five. For item number thirty, Mr. Chairman, this is a supply and delivery installation of the medical hospital equipment for the Pidmo for one supplier, the E and V Medical Fabrication Supply Corporation for the contract cost of seven million eight hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred. So moving for the passage of the resolution authorizing for the approval as requested by provincial governor, Mr. Chairman, from items number twenty-five to thirty, Mr. Chair?
Any objections, discussions, hearing none, the omnibus motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Proceeding now for the last item, Mr. Chairman, in our addendum one, Mr. Chair? This is again item number thirty-one, may we now recognize, Mr. Chairman, again, the gentleman from the second district, the honorable board member, Attorney Holis Monsanto, Mr. Chair?
Board member Monsanto is recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Thank you again, Majority Floor Leader. This is in addendum, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is a communication received by the Committee on Appropriations and Rules and Privileges, a letter dated December one twenty twenty-five, with attachment coming from the office of the provincial governor. Uh, Roheilio Neil Pierokey, provincial governor and PDC chairperson, which endorses the provincial Development Council Executive Committee Resolution Number Fifteen dash twenty twenty-five entitled, "A Resolution Amending the Supplemental Annual Investment Program for Supplemental Budget Number Three of the General Fund for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five and Endorsing the Same to the Sanguniang Panaluwigan for Adoption and Approval." May I be allowed to make some discussion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Monsanto, go ahead, sir.
Uh, last session, we have approved already the PDC resolution for the annual investment program for our supplemental budget number three. We have approved it, and supposedly, we are going to approve our supplemental budget number three today. But last Friday, there was a communication received from us, from the office of our budget officer, informing us that there was a direction, there was a directive coming from the national government that there will be an additional incentive to be given to the employee, and that is known as the personal motivation incentive or the PMI. And how much would that be? Each employee will be given equivalent to their one-month salary, no? Will be given to their one-month salary. So, uh, only the regular and casual, because the guidelines will be subject to the civil service rules. So, but this will be based on our performance also. Kay, kung dili kita makakuha o very satisfactory rating, then we cannot be entitled to the one month. So katong mga satisfactory rend performance, sabi naging ko nato according to Mamifi, katong nakunayuban gud nga mga empleado nga, dagdag absences, daghan o tardines, mga yunana, proportionate, proportionate, siya dili po, kingon nga mas zero, makadawat giapon, pero not for the whole amount. So this is the purpose why we, we have this additional, uh, we have this amended supplemental annual budget. Kay, if this will not be included in our supplemental budget number three, we cannot make supplemental budget number four. So there was a, yes, there was a proposal from our budget officer during the meeting of the regional budget officers nga. Kun pwede next year, nataipanghatag ang ato. But, naging unaguban nga mga budget officers sa atong mga LGO, nga kun manghatag kami, maquestion kanganong ang province nga budget officer dili makapanghatag. So we made it, uh, and we effort, we exerted efforts to find fundings nga atong makapanghatag yud kita, no? So with that, Mr. Chair, taking into consideration the urgency of the matter, so that we will not be also delayed in approving our supplemental budget number three, I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair?
In second, discussions, objections, hearing none, the motion is approved.
And for this purpose, Mr. Chair, I move for an ordinance, for the passing of an ordinance, uh, on our amended supplement, uh, on our amended supplemental annual investment program for supplemental budget number three. I so move, Mr. Chair, for an ordinance.
Objections, discussions, hearing none, the motion is approved.
And taking into consideration the urgency of the matter, Mr. Chair, I move to dispense the third and final reading and to have this ordinance, uh, of our amended supplemental investment program for supplemental budget number three be, be dispensed with, Mr. Chair?
In second, discussions, objections, hearing none, the motion is approved.
Then one more thing, Mr. Chair, uh, although I will be, be proposing this in the other matters, the treasurer, budget, the treasurer, oh, the, the accounting, okay, they need to have the supplemental budget passed within this week. Kayo didto pa kono nato sa next session murag apikina kayo, ang pagprocess sa ato ang, ang atong supplemental budget number three will include our CNA, SRI, PEI, and the PMI, personnel manage, uh, motivation incentive. So kung ato pang ipabot ito next week, murag and tendencys na mga deligut, basig, karoon pa man ang national food nagpaibalugot? Also, I move, Mr. Chair, if we could have a special session on Thursday, so only for our supplemental budget, I, although I will be moving that in the other matter.
Other matters, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Monsanto, Majority Floor.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Monsanto and, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Honorable Presiding Officer. May we now proceed to our third and final reading, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Majority Floor.
We have two items in the third and final reading, Mr. Chairman. May I request ours, may we now recognize our secretary, Mr. Chair? The Attorney, uh, Apollo Magwali, Mr. Chair, to read the ordinance number and the title of this ordinance.
Attorney Magwali, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Third and final reading, item number one, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one two R of the twenty-eighth SP, an ordinance amending section four of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero three one R of the twenty-seventh SP, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Uniformity of Dress Attire Code During the Conduct of Regular Sessions of All Sanguniang Members in the Province of Bukinon and for Other Purposes."
Those who are in favor of the approval of this ordinance for the third and final reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are not in favor, say nay. The eyes have it, the ordinance number two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twelve, twelve R of the twenty-eighth SP, entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section Four of Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Zero Three One R," entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Uniformity of Dress or Attire Code During the Conduct of Regular Sessions of All Sanguniang Members in the Province of Bukinon and for Other Purposes," is hereby approved on third and final reading.
Item number two, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one three R of the twenty-eighth SP, an ordinance declaring every month of March as real property tax month in the province of Bukinon to promote public awareness and timely payment and assessment of real property taxes, providing funds therefore and for other purposes.
Those who are in favor of the proposed ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are not in favor, say nay. The eyes have it, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen R of the twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth SP, entitled, "An Ordinance Declaring Every Month of March as Real Property Tax Month in the Province of Bukinon to Promote Public Awareness and Timely Payment and Assessment of Real Property Taxes, Providing Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes," is hereby approved on third and final reading. Thank you, Attorney Magwali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding now, Mr. Chair, to our other communication, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Majority Floor.
Honorable Presiding Officer, I move for the following, Mr. Chair. Item number one, forward to the Committee on Health for Information Appropriate Action. Item number two, forward to the board, to the board members, Minister Bakasinabe, and the board member, Yelo Islinas, for information reference. Item number three, forward to Committee Engineering Public Works, and board members, Marlon Brando Dinlayan, Bobby Dinlayan, and also board member, Attorney Holis Monsanto, for information reference. So moving for the approval of as enumerated, Mr. Chair?
In second, discussions, objections, none. Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Board members' time, Mr. Chair, may we have now the honorable board member Monsanto regarding on the request for the special session, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Monsanto, Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Chair, as, uh, we have already approved, we have already passed an ordinance for the approval of our amended annual investment program for supplemental budget number three. The next step for us is to pass, is to pass an ordinance for our supplemental budget number three, pursuant to the said amended EIP, Mr. Chair. So, inasmuch as we only have one session, and that would be on the next Tuesday, if we have to, to pass this supplemental budget number three on the next Tuesday, that would be already a, a period nga murag dili na kaita makapas mapanghatag sa mga benefits within the month of December. So the accounting and our treasury needs to have the supplemental budget to be approved this week. So, uh, we have a suggestion here, we propose first on the Thursday, but if we could have the special session tomorrow at one P M.,
Tomorrow?
Then we can facilitate early sa ato ang, uh, supplemental budget number three.
Na laguhi kiri sa ato ang secretary kung nabai, naigap ani ang special or regular session? Wala, wala kwan?
Provided in the local government, kung, Mr. Chair, there is none.
So okay lang?
But what is only required is that at least twenty-four hour notice.
Okay.
Twenty-four hour notice before the special.
Can we have that on tomorrow's afternoon?
Uh, Mr. Chair, per information, per information, Mr. Chair?
Dili habot sa twenty-four hour notice kung tomorrow ta?
Ang tomorrow?
Oh, kung tomorrow afternoon, but that's why.
Anyway.
Uh, 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 twenty-four hour notice, ang importante, uh, Mr. Chair, the spirit and the, there will be time for the recipient to be notified, Mr. Chair.
So we can have it on Thursday morning nalang?
Kun, kun napikina sa Thursday, gusto mo tomorrow? Anyway, the, the supplemental budget number three, as we try to communicate with them, will be submitted this afternoon. Anana, ah, nagisubitagay nila supplemental budget number three. So, kung, lagi, kun pwede, ugman nalang siguro, I, I don't know how we can do away with the notice requirement.
I think that answers already, Mr. Chair, because what is important is that the recipients are notified, so that they are given twenty-four hours.
Okay.
But since the, the members, the honorable members are around, they are already notified, Mr. Chair.
So we'll just inform through email siguro, no? The other members who are not present for today.
Can we have to have the our number one for the, for the?
Muradi pa, mataba ka virtual good?
Dili, dili, for our, for the, our special session. Rairan, rairan, ato special session?
Ambot mo function na bata, diba?
Dili, ang atong, dili na fisikaleng lugar na kwan, fisikaleng, na present, direct, for tomorrow. They are already eleven, one o'clock, eh, two o'clock?
Anyway, part pa man ya, ponis ato ang duty, so pwede, kaya siguro, i-inform na to members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe, and I suggest that we have to put it on record, Mr. Chair, that those who are present today, their presence, their attendance today will already serve as a notice for them for our special session tomorrow at one P M., Mr. Chair?
So, what's the pressure? Uda badi?
Moving, moving to that, Mr. Chair?
Okay, any objections or discussions? Hearing none, tomorrow special session at one P M. is hereby approved. Only one item? Sadu, beredipas sadu? Disraduy?
One o'clock, yes.
Malaytong mangani, wala pa toka toka?
Uh, uh, one, one more thing, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Monsanto, go ahead.
If we will be having our special session tomorrow, is still, would it still be a need for us to have our December nine regular session? Need pagiapon? Sabi na ko, mahuli, mahuli pa na sa special session pa. Kay para sa nine, pag-ane na to, naka, naka, naka rock and roll na to ba?
Siguro, basig pwede ang nine na session, i-mubog Monday? Padili, Monday, padita makrami?
Halidie mah?
Ay, halidie?
Halidie ang ay.
Okay, tama deh.
Pistas gibawin?
Hahaha.
Actually, tas ba tong kwan, ato, ato ang tas, pwede na to ilisin lang guma, yanga toang kwan karong kwan, last, last session na to?
Dila tamagin baito kwan?
Dila tamagin baito ka ng mga kwan?
Morning.
When will be our first session sa kwan, sa, sa twenty twenty-six? Diba? Sa six? Do we have already determined our, ano, fix our monthly convocation? Because in recognition of that our commendation ato resolution, basa to mga commendation, can we give them specially at Central Mindanao University? O, sa Bukinon State University? Sa monthly convocation, ditto yud, monthly convocation?
Yeah.
Basta national award? Ang katong bukso, muto iba, diba?
Top natural, pwede direlang, eh? Dini la, katolang bukso lang siguro, the institution lang?
National pa yun? Top natural?
Katolang top natural?
Pidira, direla?
Anak atada diri, Mr. Chair, kay naslay opportunity to speak?
Yeah.
Karispan?
Direlang, ditto, lalaman?
Mutohan na?
So we can have that our first monthly convocation, katolang mga institution? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Lord.
Our monthly convocation, katolang mga institution, bukso and the CMU. But I think the PRC, dinin na lang? Dinin na lang?
Ah. And katoy mo ang Comandator Award? Magkwan, award bukato, dire?
Yeah.
Mo lagi? So, any other? So, any other matters from the board members? If there are none, um, we will now recognize our secretary for the secretary's time. Go ahead, Attorney Magwali.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to reiterate, Mr. Chair, our last session will be on the nine, at, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning, Mr. Chair. So that would be our last session for the year twenty twenty-five. Um, just to reiterate again with your, seeing your generosity for those who have not yet given their share during our foundation anniversary, to just turn it over to Mam Joan for accounting purposes, Mr. Chair? And then, uh, uh, may, Mr. Chair, may I be given a very brief, uh, video clip to report this body with regard to our travel to Benguet?
Yes. Yes, please, go ahead.
We traveled to Binget upon instruction from this body to respond to their letter to witness their Devi Festival. And this is in line with the proposed and ongoing sisterhood, brotherhood initiative between the province of Bukinon and Binget, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Attorney Magwali.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have the delegation all the way from Bukinon, led by Governor Rogeria Roke and Vice Governor Clive Quinio, represented by Secretary Tres Sangunyang Panlalawigan, Attorney Apollo Magwali, and staff.
As far as we are concerned, we should not have to argue with Bukinon. Salamat lahat ngayon, at pasya, salamat sa inyo, at ang pati saan, Bukinon. Thank you very much for coming to our events to celebrate the 20th anniversary as the parties, as far as we are celebrating, as this day anniversary as the sisterhood of the parties of the year and culture of the country.
We would like to officially welcome the delegation from Bukinon. Good day to all of you. In behalf of the people of Bukinon, we sincerely congratulate on gratitude for the invitation and give us the opportunity to visit your wonderful province and witness the growing celebration of the Dubai festival. Congratulations and we wish you all the best. The province of Binget and our province of Bukinon share a lot of similarities and common indicators. But the most important and most relevant similarities of our villages is our culture. We hope union, the importance of the protection, conservation, and respect of the cultural heritage and the rich indigenous people. Both our festivals is highly related in purpose and meaning. Adivai festival which means coming together. Our common festival, which is worldwide a man of celebration, is completed into a gathering together. These festivals are collectively celebrated the rich indigenous culture and the vision in the province. The people of Bukinon takes pride and make reason why. We accept the project of Bukinon Belgium. We look forward to more collaborations and join together to promote the best experience of our people. Luckily, my willingness to the tradition to the province of Binget should means a check on the religion of Adivai festival. If we look ahead, look the spirit of this festival inspire us to take pride in our heritage, embrace diversity, and work hard in trying to overcome challenges and challenging initiatives that are beef, the province, and the nation's lives. We are heart be filled with the removal and cheer devotion towards prosperity and ability of Binget from our Christian by festival prize region. Once again, thank you and young blood for all of us.
Uh, it seems, Mr. Chair, that this is an ongoing relationship between the provinces. And in fact, my Governor Kipis wishes to be invited because as well as the rest of the board members, they never get tired in visiting Bukinon. They love Bukinon, they like Bukinon and the people. And when I talk with Governor Dekla, Mr. Chair, he reminded me to post through with the sisterhood, brotherhood documentation so that we can finalize, because we can, so that we can collaborate not only in ecotourism, cultural exchanges, but as well as other activities between the two provinces, Mr. Chair. So, we are currently studying right now the documentary requirements, Mr. Chair, to finalize the sisterhood.
So, how long the process, how long the, ano, the sisterhood process? It will take time?
It, I, I hope it will not take time, but I believe there is some intervention from the national offices to comply, Mr. Chair.
Taas, taas sila ang ato ang katabo ng documentation ato?
Uh, medyo taas, Mr. Chair.
Or di li gini, may tabo ba ang bibo? Kung wala kita'y makato dito mga board member, meaning bibo, Binget and Bukinon, bibo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
O, diba? Bibo?
But, uh.
Oh, B, Binget, and B, Bukinon? Do you want resolution of bibo? Bibo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Diba sisterhood? Pero importante gini nga ma-bibo, kung ma-phil po nung talaga dito?
Yes, we can go there, they keep on inviting us, Mr. Chair, and also, uh, yes.
Maybe the sisterhood or brotherhood can be possibly facilitated if we will be having a joint session?
Joint session?
Yeah. Bondery? Uh, there is another option offered by a former board member, John Beltran, to expedite it, why not hold our sisterhood, brotherhood between Sangunian Panlalawigan? Uh, at, at, at the start, Mr. Chair, mga Sangunian lang sa, so, oh. And then, we can keep, we can make a move as any and overview also, Mr. Chair. The gan sa ang gusto makin sisterhood sa Binget. In fact, when we arrived there, the delegation from Kuchi, Japan, Japanese delegation led by their governor and their lawmakers were there. And ang ilapong gi-promote dito is ang mga farmers nga ipa-antos sa Japan, i-trainila, and then i-apply ang technology sa Binget. So, maang ilapong, I mean, we were there. Uh, not that belong to Ifo Gao, Mr. Chair, Benawi, but part of Kodelira, Kodelira region.
Wala na may rice, may rice dito?
Yeah. Yes, the capital of Binget is Latrinidad, just 15 minutes away from Baguio. But Baguio is highly organized city already. So, the capital of Binget is transferred to Latrinidad. So, that's the, ano, and terrain, Binget is almost similar with Bukinon. And there are practices, the indigenous practices, like the, the offering and sacrificing of pigs and holding festivities. What amazed us there is that after the sacrifices of pig, Mr. Chair, the whole community shares their meal. And the pigs are sponsored by each municipality. So, that, I believe, uh, Mr. Chair, this mga 20? To 20? 13, oh, sorry, 13. A little bit pure than us. Okay, matdakop man ang Bukinon mga good sa land area.
Pa pumula ang dito, dito mga hadlo po tong laagana sa Baguio. Nita wak-wak, eh? Diba na to event in the February ba to? So, to you plan on baseballs in February? Baguio.
Ang sa Binget, Adivai, Adivai Festival, one-month celebration, Japan. Yeah.
Sige, thank you.
So, ah, nag, the governor, Vice Governor Kipis, insya, sabinyo, kaya gobok, baikob, imbitahin you kemidian? Yeah, parang, imbita, din siya dito. Lalo na sa kamulan, daw.
Lagi, wala bibo to kamulan, diksiir, ba'ke, napaginimra. Babo. Yes, majority floor, go ahead.
I think, are you done?
That's my report, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for listening very quick.
Thank you, Attorney Magwali.
And last, uh,
Mr. Chairman, um, I was just also informed a minute ago regarding on the concern of the, our secretary that they have actually eventually scheduled tomorrow from the North Cotobato, I think, the North Cotobato? So, they have kuno a visit?
Morning, Mr. Chair, then we will treat them for lunch, Mr. Chair. So, they are. Pati mo budrag pa a little bit sa.
So, our session will be on 10 o'clock, Mr. Chair?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock ang atong session?
Basta uma, di lang ma-mobling, adlaw uma lang yon? Naghangiyo sila 3 o'clock, kuno? Ah, para di li kaya magkram, ano, to man? Unsa rasa North Cotobato na?
Magbin, maggingiya po sila, di re, balas, balas lang, Mr. Chair.
Ang mga kwan, tanan?
Ang, ang SP. Stop lang, but there are more on the structures of the office of the secretary, Mr. Chair.
Ang problema sa 3 o'clock, iblagyo na ba ang uman?
Actually, dali, dali na kita bang big? In just a matter of 20 minutes, man, at sa satu session, importante ani ang mo present, truman si Mamifi?
Yeah. An accounting?
Pag call de, because we have only one subject matter in the special session. So, after sa roll call, present, then?
Nala, pabor pa, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, just to remind that our provincial Christmas party will be on December 12 at 3 o'clock. So, uh.
Friday.
Friday. So, nasa chile, parts of activity that presentation by office. So, since wala na magitay time ano, because na busy man ta sa atong foundation anniversary, Mr. Chair, it is proposed that kato mga gi-practice dina to nga.
Morate, i-present dito? Disip, I think that was also what we are doing last, last party, diba? Okay, siya nakadaw, moy mo present dito?
Moy mo present dito.
Siguro adog, mura kamun, na lagi siguro may makadaw, gane, kaya. Grand Slam, Grand Slam na? Grand Slam na?
Di lang ko biya't sa, kaya base kaya niyong distrito may moda, oh, so, magandam lang po.
Mag Grand Slam na na, Attorney Magwali, eh?
So, that ito, Mr. Chair, selamat, kaya.
Okay, na kaya para kami, kasi ako, no more, others?
No more, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, majority floor? Story? Serving you more, serving you best with world-class standard.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment of our regular session.
The, 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 the regular session is hereby adjourned. Thank you. Why story?